Excellent. I'd like to welcome you all to the regular meeting of the planning commission. It is Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, I'm Gigi, we'll call these.
I'd love to. Commissioners present and establishing a forum. We have Commissioners Blair, Dawkins, Lockhart, Lo, and Petrino.
Moving on to public comments, this is the time for people to speak to the planning commission in person on issues related to the city of Monroe, except for those issues subject to a public hearing. When invited to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and associated issue with the city or area of residence. The timer will then be started and each speaker is limited to three minutes. We do have one public commentary this evening, so.
Hello, my name is Stacey McGrader. I live at the five fourteen West Main Street in Monroe. And tonight, I understand you're going to bear a proposal for the addition of ADUs as required by state law in various residential zones in the city. And while I'm fully in support of this proposal, I would like you to please consider expanding it to the mixed-use neighborhoods also. Where I live at the border of Kelsey and Maine, I have across from me a vet clinic and chiropractor, and then two single-family homes make up for four corners. For my single-family home to convert to mixed-use, to have a retail use or commercial use in that property, it is not economically viable now. The value of the home is too great. So if you were to allow ADUs, it would allow someone to have a commercial use and live on site, and really embody what mixed-use means. So I'd like you to consider adding to the proposal the addition of mixed-use neighborhoods for ADUs.
Thank you. Moving on to item four point one, approval of minutes from January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? I make a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Brandy's motion? Okay, all in favor? Good. Moving on to new business, item five point one, election of the chair and vice chair.
Good evening, Commissioners. And I brought this to you at our last meeting, but we were missing Commissioner Dawkins, and I just wanted us to have everyone present for this election, so we have pushed it off to this meeting. So tonight, we are going to hold our election of chair and vice chair. So I've put the requested actions on the screen. One is a motion to elect the chair, and one is the motion to elect the vice chair for the twenty twenty five planning commission. So if anyone has a proposal for the chair, I would love to hear.
I propose that Melanie Lockhart be the chair.
Does anyone say Kelsey?
I second that.
Do we have a vote on that, or discussion? We're not getting any of them.
So the update, you're at least three weeks out. So the mayor did hold interviews. There are still the two vacancies. He's still considering and is hoping that there's a geography concern. We have a large group now from the downtown area, generally speaking, south of US two and west of one seventy ninth, and we have you and Bob up on the hill, but we don't really have anybody now on the west side of the community, and so he's he's hopeful that somebody might apply. If not, he'll make a decision. So you're still several weeks out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, just to remind everybody, so the mayor makes a recommendation and then it goes to council for their final decision because they ultimately appoint the city of the commission.
Let's got a moment a second then. All in favor?
I'm fine. Did you just vote for yourself?
I did.
And Commissioner Lockhart, you have been voted to be the chair for the planning commission for twenty twenty five.
From yet, in the absence of anyone else, you stepped right up and we seem less so.
Yes, you did. Thank you. All right. Moving on to our vice chair, do I hear a nominee? Kelsey?
I move to elect Brandy Blair as the vice chair for the two thousand twenty five planning commission.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, again and again.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to Brandy. You are now the vice chair of the planning commission for twenty twenty five. A nice seamless election. No clues. I like it.
It's always a good day when you're on those.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving on to item five point two, proposed accessory dwelling unit and permanent processing code amendments.
Good evening, Commissioners. So tonight I'll be presenting recent state mandates to our policies relating to accessory dwelling units. In addition to these changes that I'm bringing forward tonight, there are other state mandates that have come forward, so you'll be hearing from Leanne for the conversion of existing buildings to residences. And then also later, you'll be, at a later date, you'll be hearing from Ramita regarding middle housing. And so this is just a larger collection of state mandates the state has been bringing forward to increase our overall housing supply. Hey, so tonight I'll be talking about what ADUs are, and then the current policy in Monroe, and then some guidance that that we've received over the past ten, twelve years from different from the state and commerce. And then House Bill thirteen thirty seven, and so that's the mandate that we're going to be talking about tonight. City Council and planning commission considerations. I've ran some numbers for you, and then also some additional things to consider. Getting started, what are ADUs? They're just small residences that share a lot with the primary dwelling unit. So there's some examples on the screen. Sometimes they're in a basement or an attic attached to either the side or rear of the house, or they can be detached. So with a garage or without, just detached from the primary dwelling. Some of the benefits of ADUs are support aging in place. You know, we went, we went to the senior center and we're working on the comp plan, and I heard from quite a few people that it, you know, they need more accessible housing, so apartments are kind of difficult. There's a lot of stairs, so it's just nice to be in a neighborhood, Miss Moore's cottage style. Some people will take their home and move into the smaller unit and rent out the primary. It provides financial support, added value. It's also really good for family members, or you know, if you have a disabled family member that needs some caretaking nearby, or small families, it's usually a more affordable option. So currently, if you were going to get an EDU and you come into the city and you talk to a planner, you'll talk to one of us and we'll let you know it's a type-two decision. And so a type-two decision means that you're gonna get, the mayor's gonna go out to the neighbors and you're gonna get a sign in front of your yard. So it brings in that, the public comments. You are only allowed one attached or detached EDU. And the square footage of the EDU can be eight hundred square feet or forty percent of your primary dwelling unit, whichever is less. So let's say I have a thousand square foot home, I can have a four hundred square foot EDU. And then also no more than two bedrooms. It has to be secondary to the primary dwelling unit, so the location of the entrance and the and this EDU itself needs to be off to the side or the rear, not a primary element from the road. We, you have to have an additional parking space, and the owner must reside in either the primary or accessory dwelling unit. And with that, you have to sign a covenant and an affidavit, and you'll have it recorded against your property to let anyone in the future that owns your home know that they must live in either dwelling. Oh, yes, Bob. I'm sorry, Commissioner Petrino.
You're muted.
You can call me Bob, that's fine. Does the unattached EDU have to have a separate entrance?
Typically, they do. I'm not sure that we require that, but I believe they typically do, the ones that I've processed here.
Like an upstairs or attic or a basement might not have its own entrance?
I don't believe that's something that we look for when we're doing the review. So that might be a building department question, but I can, I can see even a basement, you would need to go inside maybe the more of a common area. Be able to go down.
Thanks.
So over the past ten years, the city has approved nine EDU applications. And you can see in twenty twenty four, we did not, we didn't approve any, or we didn't receive any. We did receive one towards the end of twenty twenty four. It was approved last month, so it counts in the twenty twenty five data. A lot of folks have come in to ask about, inquire about ADUs, and I think a lot of people are reading for these regulations to change, because it'll be a little bit easier for them. But in most years, we get one, maybe two EDU applications. For the most part, they come into the R four zone, more than half of the ADUs are there, a few in R seven and R fifteen. Nine have been approved, but eleven have been applied for. I know that one of the ones that didn't get approved, they stated it was just financial reasons. Another one, it had to do with the location of it and maybe some public comment over the location, and then it just fizzled out from there. Didn't really pick back up. And most of the applications we get are detached dwelling units. All right, so something, yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just I, I already have the first one. Over, how many years?
So they've never since about ten years, because I went forward to twenty.
Okay, thank you.
So a lot has been changing. A lot has come forward, either from the Fugit Sound Regional Council. The city of Monroe has done some work on ADUs. Quite a few of them. I'll dive into them here shortly. So Vision twenty fifty, who we set the stage wanting us to look at more housing types and really look at our housing supply and expand on that with our, for more moderate density housing. Regional housing strategy put out by Fugit Sound Regional Council also was asking jurisdictions to allow for more housing choices, and they, they pulled out accessory dwelling units as an item they wanted to see reformed. And then state law came forward and they were encouraging cities to allow more accessory dwelling units in other zones that they aren't currently allowed in. And really just moving forward to making it easier to have ADUs. And then the city of Monroe, we, we have our housing action plan. I'm not sure if you were involved in that, but here are some of the priorities that we have in there relating to ADUs. The second one is streamline the EDU permitting process, and so that's something that we are going to be talking about tonight. The third one, looking at amending the EDU code, is exactly what we're doing, the test of medium priority. And then the fourth is promoting ADUs as an option for multi-generational housing. That is not something that is part of code amendments. That's not a a code item, but that is something we can talk about doing after the code changes, putting outreach out there for multi-generation housing. All right, so House Bill thirteen thirty seven passed, and it requires jurisdictions to adopt new AD regulations by six months after the adoption of their comp plan. As you know, we just adopted ours, so that gives us until June thirtieth of this year to adopt new regulations. They put out some specific definitions that are here on the screen for ADU dwelling unit, and so we're proposing to change our definitions to match these. Something else it requires is allow ADUs in all zones where single-family dwelling units are permitted. So currently, we do allow ADUs in all zones where single-family dwelling units are permitted. There are some zones, like the mixed-use neighborhood zone, where there are single-family dwelling units. They're existing, non-conforming, so you couldn't build one today. But, so that's why we aren't right now proposing to add them here, but that's something that we can talk about adding ADUs in other zones. Something else that we're required is we now need to allow two ADUs per lot in all single-family zones. So we only allow one. So the proposed regulation is now to allow two, and that can be one attached, one detached, both detached or both attached.
That would be subject to the size of the lot, right?
They would still need to follow lot coverage. There's some considerations over setbacks, but we'll talk more about those later. Yeah, it doesn't, it they wouldn't need to mean it for density, though. So we talked earlier about square footage, and now a thousand square feet is the minimum that we can choose for their for their maximum. So we can say in our code, we will allow ADUs up to a thousand square feet. Planning Commissioning Council can choose a different number than a thousand square feet. It just needs to be a thousand square feet or greater. So staff's recommending that we stick with the minimums that are required, but really, this is a topic that we can discuss. So just so you remember, right now, we were at eight hundred or, or less.
So if you make the minimum a thousand, though, someone might not have room to make a thousand square foot EDU.
So that would be the maximum they would be allowed to have per EDU. So they could build an eight hundred square foot EDU or a four hundred square foot EDU. They just can't go over a thousand if we choose that number.
And why would we want to limit it to a thousand square feet?
I think it's for the purpose of what an EDU is. It's an accessory dwelling unit, typically a smaller unit that's accessory to a larger unit.
Do, what, what limits do some other jurisdictions have on theirs? Because it seems like if we're trying to be really flexible, that we would want to have like that option of forty percent or some, some percentage, or I would like, not really like the max, or I don't like limiting it to that, because someone could have a really large half-acre property that they could, you know, a thousand square feet is not really that big for a small family, or the things we were just talking about, for it to try to meet. And so it wouldn't probably make sense for someone to put money in to do that on some properties.
I'm going to go ahead and research what other cities are doing. I hadn't done it when I created this presentation, because a lot of cities hadn't started the process yet. But now there's a lot of information out there, so I will look a little bit further. Not a lot of jurisdictions have adopted it in Washington, but I'm going to do research and bring that to you.
I thought I read, hi, I thought I read that it was a thousand square feet max or the forty percent somewhere in the document. Whichever one is larger is what they can do.
I think that might be the old regulations that was, were stricken in, in the materials that were given to you. But I'll look at that also. I believe, I believe it's just a thousand square feet, or, or you can choose a larger number.
I'm trying to see if I'm reading this correctly on here. So the local governments may not require ADUs to be smaller than a thousand, so we're proposing, you're proposing that be the max. So that's the minimum by the state, that that would be our max, what you're requesting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make sure I have it straight.
Oh, I get it. So you're looking at the that very last bullet is minimum thousand square feet, probably should be maximum.
Right.
But we're up for conversation based on what Commissioner Blair was asking about the other cities. I will bring them in.
I think that's worded correctly, the proposed regulation, because we can go bigger than that. But the, so, because the government can't require that it be smaller than a thousand square feet, however, we can include it so that it's like a thousand square feet is the maximum that we will allow, but it's the minimum for the state.
It depends on who the audience is, whether it's a minimum or a maximum. It's your minimum, and it would be the community's maximum.
So the proposed minimum of thousands is not really what you want.
Right, because you could, you could have a, I think it's down to three hundred square feet is the minimum area for a living space per individual under the building code. So you could absolutely have it smaller. We just can't say you're, you're.
No, I understand what you're saying on that. I was just saying, we're still trying to limit it here in Monroe, but.
I think most jurisdictions are limiting to a square footage, but I will do research on that and bring, bring some information back.
I mean, I understand, I, you know, like you're saying is it can really be different depending on a lot size and, you know. I've been a house started previously, already, you know, but I may have.
Commissioner Dawkins, you have another question?
Yeah, on seven, on the document, on seven point five, it says the floor area of the accessory dwelling unit, whether attached or detached, shall be limited to the larger of a thousand square feet or forty percent of the total floor area of the principal dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit combined, including any related garage. And then, and that's like the new red stuff, I think, that we're adding to the code.
Which page of, are you in a PDF? Which page is it on?
It is on oh, there's no page numbers, but it's, it's right under the table. Sorry, it's all small because we're on page ten. No, eleven, eleven. Seven point five. Or sorry, five. The seven is struck out. Size and scale.
I don't want to move my screen.
No, that's totally fine. I just, I think that the way that's written is great, like with the forty percent or a thousand square feet, whichever one's larger, because before it was whichever one was smaller. And like I have a thousand square foot home, and so forty percent of that would have been a four hundred square foot EDU, and that was the max I could build. So I think that that's a really great change, and I like the way that's worded.
So what it says for everyone else is the floor area of an accessory dwelling unit, whether attached or detached, shall be limited to the larger of a thousand square feet or forty percent of the total floor area of the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit combined, excluding any related garage area. That's what we're going with then?
We'll double check.
We'll double check.
Well, this will bring back as a discussion item.
Yeah, I think the and accessory dwelling unit combined is is extra. I, I don't think that that should be in there, because it should be forty percent of the existing principal dwelling, not the, not forty percent.
Yeah, I think. Then we'll never know that number, because whatever, if you decide to make the additional.
Yeah. It's a whole mystery.
All right, thank you. So another item is that the local government cannot impose setback requirements, yard coverage limits, tree retention mandates, or restrictions on the entry door location that are more restrictive than those required for the principal dwelling unit. So currently, we do not have setback requirements, yard coverage limits, or tree retention mandates that are more restrictive than the primary dwelling unit. It's just for the lot in itself. We do have a restriction on the entry door location, so we're proposing to remove that requirement from the EDU. Yes, Commissioner Dawkins.
I think, I was wondering where the the tree mandate coverage is. I, if that's, do we have one for new builds and stuff?
We do not. We do not, and I'm sorry if that section seems a bit confusing, because it's from the state. But we, what they're saying is we can't use that as a tool to discourage ADUs.
Would that be something that would need to be added, or if we were to add something like that, would that be in this section of code? Or for canopy and stuff like that, or?
So Kelsey, we'll probably be getting to that soon. I don't know if you saw, if you took a look at the strategic plan, but one item actually under the Parks Department has to do with a forestry plan. And then if you recall, when we were talking about the comp plan amendments, we have to do a climate change element. There, there are canopy retention requirements in that, so it is coming. It will absolutely not be part of this particular code section. It might be under landscaping. It could be under design standards, or it could be, it's a standalone section. That's still to be determined.
That this would just refer back to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
So another item is that we must allow detached ADUs to be decided at a lot line if the lot line above some public alley. They also go on to say, unless the city or county routinely plows snow on the public alley. I checked with the Public Works Department. We do not routinely plow snow in any of our alleys. They said they might in the future, and we could weave this language in. It does sound a little bit confusing. So what that means is the setbacks that we're talking about earlier don't apply in the alleyway. So the, if a building is already situated on the, on the property line and in the alleyway. So they could also so that's that one. The next one is if you have a structure on your property that's within a setback. This has happened before in a different ED proposal. We have to allow the conversion of those existing structures to an EDU, even if it's within a setback. They would probably need to meet some building codes for fire, but that's what this one is talking about. Owner occupancy, so this is now has to go away. We can't require that the owner reside in. Owner occupancy. So this is now has to go away. We can't require that the owner reside in any of the the structures on the property. Um, I think in the packet you received, Commissioner Dawkins pointed it out for me. Thank you. Um, I still have the covenant in there, so the covenant and the affidavit are both going away. So I will update that. It's back to you. So uh, local governments cannot require street improvements as a condition of permitting ADUs. We don't require street improvements, so no change needed there. Condominium sales. So we cannot prohibit the sale of um, or condoing of one of the units, and um, that is really interesting. Um, but the condoing is a state process. We don't go through the city for that. So um, we currently don't control that, and we continue to not control that. But this topic really did bring up a lot of other questions regarding utility hookups and uh, things like that.
I have a question. How is how is condoing, turning something into a condo, different than like changing your prop, like?
Subdivening?
Yeah.
So the subdivision laws are different than the condominiumization. I've said that word. Um, typically, it is the interior space wall to wall of the building, and then you have common space to take care of. Um, a developer, a local developer in our community, um, Brooke Bynum, has done a couple of projects in the downtown core that have a yard, and he actually was able to include the yard in the condominiumization of the property. Um, it's really interesting. And again, as Amy was saying, this is not anything that the city of Monroe can regulate. It's regulated by the state of Washington. So that is a new, that's a new thing out there. Um, I will give you a follow up. I have a friend who uh, seen quite a few of these in the city of Seattle, and there'll be two, two units, but it like in Monroe, we currently, you have to tie into the existing utility connection. Down there, they have some older ones, so that condo has to have a homeowners association to divvy up the utility bills. Because there's only one connection. So that has been, as Amy was alluding to, those conversations have been in happening here uh, in Monroe, because under our current rules, you only get one sewer connection.
Yes, our Public Works Department only allows one utility connection per lot.
Uh, required parking. So the state here is saying that um, we can't require additional parking unless uh, I if, we can't require additional parking if they are located within a half a mile of a major transit stop. Major transit stop is a defined term, and um, Kate is an expert on that. Um, and we actually do not have any major transit stops within the city of Monroe. So at this point, um, there's no change required, because we allow, we 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 require one stall per ADU, and so we're proposing to continue to require one stall per ADU. Yeah, so the the transit service has to be at thirty minute intervals or better in frequency. Ours isn't hourly. So none of our bus stops in Monroe meet that definition for uh, major transit stop.
I just want to mention something. That's something from public uh, outreach and things that we've done is where there have been, um, I guess there's only nine ADUs that are allowed, but it seems like maybe some other, there's something similar going on in some neighborhoods, because people were saying that they want to have designated parking spots for uh, any additional dwelling units, because it's impactful to residential neighborhoods when there's all of a sudden, you know, five more cars showing up and to live in another living unit on the property. And our residential neighborhoods, we're trying to densify them, but also not change them so much to impact the people that already live there. So I'm glad to hear that for me, I want to keep at least one stall. So off street, like the lot has to have a spot?
Yeah, so that typically a primary dwelling unit would have to be with parking stalls, and then each additional ADU is required, would be required to have at one stall. And yes, off street.
Now, I don't even know if this was retained or issue with that in Monroe, but I know like some cities that are who are bigger, and they have this parking problem in the residential area, and they go through the permit system. They get by permission for parking, and it's a residential permit. So that keeps people that aren't residents from parking in those residential spots. Yes, there's an added spot as a resident owner, but it ensures them a spot in the street. I don't know if that's even something Monroe would need to entertain or what.
So, so that is something that the city have had off and on uh, in the historic core of the city.
Okay.
Um, it's something that would be regulated through the city council decision through our Public Works Department. It's not something that the planning commission would oversee. Alright, so they're saying here that we cannot impose aesthetic standards or requirements that are more restrictive for ADUs than the primary dwelling unit. And so the the only one we had currently is the location where it needed to be to the side or rear, and so we're proposing to um, to remove that. Height limitations, they're saying we can't um, establish certain height limitations. We don't, we don't differentiate between a primary dwelling unit's height requirement and an ADU, so no change is needed on that one. Impact fees. Um, this is a topic that we can have here. This is a city council discussion that we'll be having with, beginning with underway later this month. So the state's saying that we can't um, um, we're, we cannot charge more than fifty percent of it that impact fees that would be assessed for a primary dwelling unit. So currently, we don't assess impact fees for ADUs, so no changes needed um, on this, but it will go back to city council for consideration. Um, they can choose a number between zero percent and fifty percent somewhere in the middle. Moving on, um, so I was just talking earlier about the con- condoing them. So this is um, this is a city council consideration, but the engineering department and the planning department are working pretty closely on this, and we're trying to figure out um, one, will we allow different connections, you know, for ADU to connect directly to our system? Because currently, we don't allow them to do that, and um, who will bear those costs and what will the cost be? And um, so this is, this slide just kind of represents that um, us, maybe if they paid for um, impact fees for a second unit or the first unit. So we're just, we're having those conversations, and really, um, what I missed saying at the beginning of this is that really the point of House Bill thirteen thirty seven is to remove barriers and to allow for um, ADUs and more housing types, so um.
For those who may be interested in more information on this, um, because there is a lot of, there's a lot of nuance and detail involving public works and impact fees and connection fees and how they regulate that. And so tomorrow at the P three committee meeting and city council, um, Public Works is going to be talking about that piece. And is is, is next week?
I think, yeah.
Um, yes. My s- misspoke. Wait, so they're, but they're going to be talking much larger about impact fees, so uh, they'll when that decision is made, we'll we'll roll that into what we're doing with the ADUs, so.
Also, oh yes, Commissioner Dawkins.
Um, is there a way to meter sewers, or is that just water?
It, we just meter the water, um, but there's, there's connections. So you can have a water connection and a sewer connection.
But you pay sewer based on the amount of water.
Correct. Yeah, so your consumption of water um, determines how much sewer, assumes how much sewer you use.
So currently, now, for all, but like if you have an apartment building, yeah. Each, each apartment doesn't have its own meter for electric or water, correct?
I don't believe so. They also could be submeter, submetering and then charging. That's another option for landlords.
Right. But I know in some other cities, I I thought that's how it was here in Monroe, but I know I've heard not, not here per se, but other places, you know, where residents are complaining is they're being charged windward and they use blah, 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 so.
A- another consideration is, let's say, the if the water bill is in the primary dwelling unit's name, and they don't pay their bill, their water could be shut off, and so that can impact two other dwelling units. Um, who maybe didn't know. Um, we also don't allow more than one electric meter, and so this is a, this is our code section here. So we the engineering department is reba- uh, proposing that we revise this section uh, to maybe consider allowing electric, another electric and water. Park impact fees, it also falls under, you have those impact fees we talked about before, we don't charge them currently, and so we've been working with the Parks Department as well, and um, they, they like, as uh, Lance mentioned, are what Jango Warner studied, and so a lot of the information is going to be coming out. Um, their study is upcoming in twenty, later twenty twenty five or early twenty twenty six.
I believe it's twenty twenty five.
So here's some projections. Um, this is what Monroe might look like when these change. So we're proposing that we move this to a type one decision. It makes it much quicker. It does take out the public portion, though, so it's not going to be mailed out. We're not waiting to hear back from uh, on mentors. And that that's a type one decision, and it's the decision by the community development director. And so it'd be reviewed by staff and then um, approved by the community development director. Um, they would be allowed up to two attached or detached ADUs. Um, again, that size limitation, whatever, whatever's chosen, we, here it says they must not exceed a thousand square feet, and there will asterix there in case. No entry restrictions, one additional parking space for ADU, and they're not, the owner's not required to reside in one of the units, so. So um, in the state of Washington, ADUs have become more and more popular um, in the last fifteen years. You can see that the trend is really on the rise. I was trying to find projections for Monroe. Um, our annual average is point eight one units per year that we've received. So uh, the state of California has um, they've, they've already implemented a lot of these types of regulations, so I I was using some of their numbers, and they saw a twelve times increase, and so um, I was projecting maybe ten units per year. Um, we really don't know, and you also have to look at the geography or just the different subdivisions we have. I think if you're in the main view neighborhood, you know, they're they're pretty much at max uh, lot coverage. Um, but there's some good potential in the Highlands neighborhoods and south of Main Street. Some probably some places, yeah, mostly south of Main Street. So this is going back to the the permit fees and the cost to construct. Currently, it's it's about four hundred and eighty nine dollars to get it um, an ADU permit. That is included building permit fees. We were just trying to see what a co- what the cost would be if we charged those uh, those full impact fees. And again, multiplying those numbers by the um, nine point seven two units, um, we just need to give council some numbers of uh, for their consideration. So uh, Commerce put out some really nice guidance. I linked it in your agenda bill, and um, they have some recommendations that are above and beyond state law, and so I just wanted to present them. We're not required to do any of them. Um, some communities are allowing prefabricated units, those likely we see it like a campground, like the camp post type units. Um, or allowing tiny homes as ADUs, which um, I think tiny homes would go into that category anyway. Uh, they want us to streamline the ADU process, which I think uh, they're, sorry, they're not, they're recommending if we want to go further, we can streamline ADU process more, and um, we are doing the first one, uh, the administrative approval. Um, the second one, they're suggesting that communities expedite the review process. And um, the third one is pre-approved plans. So some cities have gone to an architect, paid them to come up with um, different plan sets that uh, somebody could come in, purchase the plan set, and it would be uh, the third review process. On on this one, I just, I want to make a note on that second bullet. Currently, we have, there are no permits that get expedited, so this would be a significant change for the city of Monroe, if that's something that the commission or the council wanted to consider. It's not norm, it's not in our normal practices. The other thing is, uh, we would definitely need to think about capacity and potentially cost to do that, so. Um, even though it's up there.
It it would need more research on before we would move forward with something like that.
And just to clarify, these are here uh, for you to look at. Um, staff is recommending that we follow uh, the House Bill thirteen thirty seven in the the minimum regulations that they are requiring of us.
I was wondering if we just have a quick discussion with commissioners on this too. Um, so if someone's going to do this, I I'm not in favor of the expedited stuff. I mean, it's a big decision for the homeowner. There's obviously a cost. It obviously could change the neighborhood. Um, we already expect to have an increase in this, um, just based on the barriers that are already being taken down. To me, I don't think adding the rush and the like, even at first, the no public comments. I mean, I would like to see people be able to comment and have some exchange of information on, just to be sure we're getting it right for the neighborhoods, and we can only do it once, you know, so we might as well get it right. That's my thought.
And we are, and with these new regulations, we are speeding things up a bit by moving it from the type two to the type one already. Right, Brandy's saying she doesn't support that. I, yes, I, yeah.
I mean, I guess that part, but I mean, is that, is that what it means on the second bullet, having an expedited review process is the type?
Two things.
Okay, okay. I'm, I I don't mind that, the type one to type two, but making it even more expedited besides that, I'm not in favor of that.
So Commissioner Dawkins?
Forgot my first question, but um, the second one was, I know that Seattle has um, like six plans uh, for ADUs that you can go in, and oh, the first question was, what, how long is the process right now? Like, if someone was to start today with plans, what does that look like? Is that six months out, or is it like six weeks out?
We always like to say that the timing is definitely based on what you submit. So that the quality of it or how complex it needs the code or how many times it needs to go back um, to the applicant, but it, uh, because of that um, public comment period, it does, it does take a few months. And so cutting that, that is probably, I think it would be cut in half.
So it takes us like two months or like six months?
Yeah, Kelsey, I just, uh, Commissioner Dawkins, I reviewed the one ADU that came through last and started in two thousand or twenty twenty four and was approved this year, and I think we were just under forty in-house days for review time, but it took three semitals from the applicant. So we did three semitals for only forty in-house days, um, obviously. Um, and that actually included the notice period as well. So we we can oftentimes turn these around a lot quicker than any of our other permits, um, but it does just kind of depend on that quality of the submittal. We we can oftentimes turn these around a lot quicker than any of our other permits. Um, but it does just kind of depend on that quality of the submittal.
And then the second thing was, um, I know Seattle has six approved, it or they did uh last year had six approved ADU plans that. Um, I think it was a six week process. Which I I know a lot of people are utilizing and I'm seeing a lot of those condo eyes done for sale over in Seattle. I think that's kind of cool because um it has. What we as a city would want those to look like already. Um, so it's like already just yes, stamp of approval, everything. Ready to go. So I think that's a really good idea for us to do if we have the resources to do that.
Thank you, Kelsey. And then Commissioner Patrino.
Would we sell the pre-approved plans to the uh? For the uh proposed. ADU? Or do we give it away?
I think, I think you actually have to pay for it, but the city has to do the upfront costs for the architects. Uh, absolutely something that we can do more research on for you to confirm that, though.
And is is there any kind of liability that? That we have to uh? Be aware of when we provide or give plans to people or sell plans to people?
So it's not necessarily there, there's um, I think the Seattle, the Seattle situation, for example, was. They actually had a design competition. And I don't remember how many semittals they got, and then they shared those six. And there's um. There's a lot of different ways and and different communities are are kind of experimenting with this. One, one that I'm aware of is you. Like, I think, I believe, don't quote me on this because I was doing some research, the previous community I worked in was doing this, and I think they have. They have a design competition and as a part of that, the architects or engineers that are submitting it agree. So to get to your li- your your liability point, they agreed to allow people to use these. Uh, I believe in the Seattle situation, they were considering, I think they went in this direction that you. Because there's a copyright essentially piece, because it's your professional work and you're stamping it. Uh, and so they, I believe, were getting a portion, like if you use one of those plans as a part of your permit fee, you pay. And it goes back to the, to the architect. Uh, so, so they are really holding the liability for anything. Because, you know, they 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 stand that the city, the city's not an architect and not an engineer, so we can't, so we can't stamp them. So that's, that's one way that that cities have done that. Uh, because it's not, the city can't really. The city can't profit from it and to recoup costs. And and typically, the the architects are not, they want a little bit of control on it because if, you know, if if something goes wrong, they are liable for it. So it's, it's a, it's got some nuances and some legal challenges to it, but it's being done. Calif- there's a lot of cities in in California that have done this, and there's more in Washington, like even some, even small cities that that are doing it. So we can, we could bring back examples of that, if that's something that uh that city, that that planning commissioner would like to see.
I would wish to, um, so with that type one, type two, when it, when it's been a type two and there's been public comment. Does, does the public comment in that process actually legally allow the city to like say, okay, no, we're not gonna. Allow this here if it, as long as it is falling within like all the permitting and and what's allowed? Or is that just something that basically turned into the people who are doing the project? Now know that, you know, some neighbors may not approve of what they're doing, and then they make a decision, say, no, it's not worth it.
Yes, we.
I was trying to say that.
I I do, I do. My very first project is a planner. Here, here's an EDU. These are usually pretty easy. Um, that actually. Um, that exact situation happened. Um, a neighbor was unhappy with the location of the EDU. Um. And they were set to appeal. Our decision is that he was gonna approve it, and the neighbor was going to appeal it. And the uh property owner actually backed out and said, never mind, it's not worth it. I I think personally, I think it's still met city code. But it became too much of a hassle for the property owner, so they went ahead and just decided not to move forward. So it it can absolutely happen. In that case, it was sort of a gray area because it's supposed to be to to the side or rear, and this one was. Um, it was oddly shaped a lot, and so it was kind of, it was to the side, but you could maybe argue. And so really, we do take public comment into consideration to make sure that we're meeting city code.
But just because somebody comments. Ousing something doesn't mean that that, that's not a criteria to deny it. It has to be based on.
And that's kind of what my question was, is that if the determination, if if by moving it, basically. The streamlining it is a time thing, because you don't have to do a hearing and allow the, you know, to mail the stuff out. So there's also. Obviously, probably cost savings might be minimal with postage, but it's still, it's a cost and time savings there. And really, the city is the one that's in the business of deciding whether it needs. The code, right? So really, public comment, yes, they might be able to bring something to the attention, like, wait, does this actually need code? But for the most part, our city employees are paid to to do this and to know what is and isn't allowed. And to say, hey, this is within, within the rights of the property homeowners.
Yeah, just looked up the the pre-approved plans from the city of Seattle, and they're nine hundreds, thousands of dollars to purchase.
I was just looking that up too. I know that I've tried to um get approved plans through an architect for a property before, and it's pretty expensive. To continue to do them. So I think it'd be like really great for our, for us to be able to provide that. Um, if these are things that are gonna help us have a more affordable living. Um, we need to be able to do them um as just a regular person and not a developer. So it's pretty, I think, a cool idea.
And it is. Depending on the situation, it it's not, it's simplified things, but it ha- you can't change anything in those plans. And and one of the things that I've seen, like, for example, if you, if you're doing that, and so the plans basically give you. A pre-planned review. Structure. So the structure still has to be put on a foundation. So you still have to get a geotech report. And you have to get a foundation design. And and one that I've seen and and talked to some planners who were doing this in their communities is. The, the, the pre-approved plans are gonna be designed for an absolute flat surface. So if you get, when you get any elevation changes, and it doesn't have to be very much, it changes sort of the structural thing. So it it's. Some, a lot of times they have to be modified, so there there are situations where you where you can't use it, and people get a little bit surprised by that. And and it's, and it's still, it's not cheap to do it on geotech and a foundation design as well. But each one of them has, is is making separate pieces, so. Not to say, I personally and professionally think it's a great idea. But it's, it's not as simple as like, oh, well, here's my plan, you know, let me, where's my permit, let me start building. And it, it does, it does short, it does shorten the review period uh for plan review, but there's, there's still some steps to it.
In it, in practice, um, the land use permit of the ADU would would still be the same length.
Yes.
This, this is after they've received approval and you're in the building permit phase. So that's where the pre-approved plans can speed up the building permit phase. You're, um, we're still looking at the site. And under the land use permit, so setback, block cover, and shape cover, working stall, all those things. All right, uh, another. Um, above minimum uh recommendation Commerce gave was to allow. For lowering come units. And I think they were, they were suggesting that you even allow more than two ADUs here. And I don't know, that. Staff is recommending that we stay with the two. All right. So I know we asked questions along the way. Do you have, do you have any other questions on this? I will be bringing this back and talking more about the pre-approved plans and um. Researching what other cities have done and bring that back to another discussion. I want to get Commissioner Dawkins, sorry.
Um, I don't know if this would be the place for that, um, but for setbacks, like for the ADUs. Um, how, if you had two detached ones, is there somewhere where there's, they need to be ten feet apart from each other? Or um would that be in the section two?
Yeah, so the setbacks are gonna be to your e- to your exterior lines, I mean, basically your lot. So anything that you put interior, um, it would have to mean a side or rear setback, but the setback from. From the, from the other EDU in the situation that you're describing would would be based on the building code.
Okay, cuz I know I'm in a couple forums on those ADUs over in Seattle, and people are having a hard time. Um, selling them as condos because their setbacks were so close. And they're not, like, it's uncomfortable how close all, all the buildings are, and they're just having complaints um. As a comment, so I. Just wanted to comment on that.
Yeah, I think one important thing is none of these, um, it's actually quite clear in the state's law. This does not supersede any of the building or life safety requirements. You still have to follow all of that. This is really getting at the land use application process. Making it lowering, like Amy was saying, lowering the barriers there, but when it comes to actual construction or conversion. You still have to meet all of the building codes. That's, that's non-negotiable. Um, there should be another action here, and that's just to continue the conversation.
So on the, I I know you're saying about. The building code and whatnot. So, and I know we kind of touched on, and I think you were saying, I think that is what Kelsey is. No.
No, not aesthetic.
Is part of that, um, how that like page and uh an attached or detached. What that building, what that it looks like? No.
We have design requirements for primary. Yeah, and so they would still need to follow those design requirements we have in our code. We just can't impose. Design requirements that go above and beyond that to maybe sneakily try to discourage EDUs. So um we don't have any other than the ones that we're cutting out.
What made me think about it, when we were looking for homes to purchase, we ended up first in Monroe. But um it was a house we didn't really like, but out of the top stories, looking out the back, there was something in the open AD on that property. And it did not look nice. The outside, the inside might have been gorgeous, I don't know. And. That made us choose not to be interested in that house. And the people selling will say, well, we've had some people say that. They're thinking about tearing it down. Like, yeah, but that's a thinking. And I kind of watched it for a while, and they kept dropping the price of that home because they couldn't sell it. So I was just kind of wondering if. You know, how that works for the aesthetics for the outside.
To be clear, that was um someone else's ADU, so like that property owner got affected by what their neighbor did. Yeah, and now they couldn't barely sell their house.
They did eventually, I think they dropped it, but I didn't finish, well, I don't know what it ended up selling for, so they kept dropping the price because.
That goes back to my, my point of keeping the the public comment open for stuff like that. Because, you know, maybe they would have noted that and could have gotten. Come up with a better solution during that process.
Because the ADU with the one story and then the other house, that was the other two stories, so it made a big difference.
I have a question. Um, so I should already know this, I'm sure, but um there's a lot of reading. And I believe what you gave us in the packet is um examples of how the changes for ADU would be in all different parts of the code. Right? This isn't, this two hundred pages isn't like this is the ADU code, right? It's like, um, because there's a lot of. It's uh, some of it's just almost like general permitting and stuff, right? And then there's a line about the ADU. This wouldn't be its own section.
So it, yes, sorry for the confusion. So anything in the packet that it's in strike and delete. So if you see it in color, that's where we added, or if it looks stricken, we've removed text. Um. I think uh Commissioner Dawkins was great and provided me a lot of questions and comments. And uh of some of those were for sections that are existing code that were not proposed with a change at all. Um, unrelated to ADUs, um, but um, but. So in here you'll see um a snippet of definitions, we're looking to add or modify. Um, a section for uh under single-family residential where the ADU regulations live. And then we also had in there, uh, see here. Land use table and uh let's see, critical areas. Um, because of one of the rules is that we can't um. Anyway, what, what is that?
Billy, uh, twenty-two point eight four dot.
Processing, yeah, processing, yeah, that's us suggesting we move it from a type two to a type one. So I know it's a lot of information, but it's really just the anything you see and read, that's our, our change to.
And just to finish, I would like us to keep talking about this, not direct any amendments yet. And um could we talk more about what the um public commenter brought up about? Anywhere that residential is allowed, that we would allow an ADU. So the mixed use and um. I'm not sure what else that would encompass, but maybe there's somewhere else that I'm not, we're not thinking of that, that also have.
They were missing on like the why, why it might not be recommended or what that looks like. You need a formal motion for that?
You know, just uh clearly just direct us to continue that conversation. I don't believe.
All right, moving on to item five forty-three. Which is an introduction to the proposed code amendments for the conversion of existing commercial buildings into residential uses. Yeah. Beginning of planning commissioners, today I'm here to talk with you about um an introduction to proposed code amendments. That focus on the conversion of existing commercial buildings into residential uses. This is another of the state mandated uh changes, and one of the three that Amy referred to earlier in her presentation. So today we're gonna talk about um Washington State House Bill ten forty-two. It passed back in July twenty twenty-three. It's intended to encourage the interior redevelopment of existing commercial or mixed-use buildings. Uh, with the goal of encouraging um. Uh, of encouraging more residential uses in those commercial buildings or higher density residential uses. In existing mixed-use buildings. House Bill ten forty-two defines an existing building as anything they got its certificate of occupancy uh at least three years ago. And then the deadline for the city of Monroe to adopt code amendments to be in compliance with House Bill ten forty-two. Is gonna be June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, because that's six months after we adopted our updated comprehensive plan. So the list of requirements for the House Bill ten forty-two. Uh, the city must allow fifty percent greater residential density in any area that um allows residential units. So for example, if you have a piece of property that under our current code can support ten residential units. Um, if you're converting the interior of a commercial building, we have to allow fifty percent more, so up to fifteen dwelling units. Within that interior of the commercial building. And then next is a list of things the city cannot do to help encourage this type of redevelopment. So the city cannot require any additional parking for any of those residential developments. Uh, we can require that you retain any onsite. Uh, we can require that you retain any onsite parking that already exists, but you can't require any additional parking for those remodels. We can't require any additional permitting beyond beyond what is required for any other new building, which is not something we do anyways right now, so no change was required to the new Monroe municipal code for that. We cannot require any additional um, exterior design standards beyond that, what we would require for any new building. So again, no change is actually required in our municipal code for this one as we would require any interior remodel to meet certain design standards. Um, we cannot require a ground floor commercial use unless um, the building is located in a major pedestrian corridor, which for us is gonna be the downtown promenade, that's the only area we have. We cannot require additional transportation con- contingency study or a CBA review. So the transportation would just be an update to a permit checklist, but CBA review will require a code amendment and this type of project would be exempt from CBA review under state law. And then the last item is we can can, we cannot tell an entire building that is being converted that it must meet the current building energy codes, only those converted spaces. So the property owner chose to convert only the second and third floors of a building, but leave the first floor untouched in a commercial use. That first floor would not have to meet current energy codes, only the converted spaces in that second, therefore, we need to meet those updated building codes. And then we cannot deny a project based on any um, existing non-conformities. Again, this doesn't actually require any uh, code amendments to our municipal code because our non-conformity chapter already uh, allows this if the project is done within the footprint of existing building. House Bill ten forty-two um, is specific about which zones we have to allow these conversions in, so it's gonna be any mixed-use or commercial zone that also allows residential. So here in the city, that's gonna be our mixed-use general and mixed-use neighborhood zones. And then within the downtown commercial zone, three of the neighborhoods, the residential neighborhood, the east downtown, and then historic main. And then in the general commercial zone, the only area that would be affected would be that Tierney Place overlay. So just to kind of, this is our current zoning map, as you know, the comprehensive plan is gonna be updated, but you can see arrows by the areas that would be affected, so it's that light purple and the darkest purple for the mixed-use zones, um, the downtown commercials in the red, and a little bit of the general commercial, the only the area with the popadex though, where he has highlighted, and we're over there in the Tierney over overlay. And then just the zoomed-in version on the on the downtown, so this bill would affect the east downtown neighborhoods, the residential neighborhoods, but in historic main, but would not affect the downtown promenade because it's a major pedestrian corridor. It is worth noting that um, if a building is facing Main Street, the promenade may be the ground floor, but historic main are in stories above that first floor, so we do have a couple of um, two and three-story buildings downtown. So those buildings could take advantage of these code amendments and those second and third levels could be converted into residential units. So just as some examples in town of different buildings that could qualify, I just drove and picked some that could qualify. So these are examples in the mixed-use neighborhood zone, and I think one that was in a mixed-use general zone, um, and they're all older than three years. And then here are some examples in the commercial zones, so the PECU and Dr. Gail Dentist is the only building in the Tierney overlay that we've all arrived, it's the only building that's over three years old. And then these are just some examples in the downtown zone, fell only the areas in the yellow. So this is um, Lance mentioned, the city of Seattle did a design competition for ADUs, they also did one for this code amendment. Um, and they did a design competition specifically for uh, the conversion of existing commercial buildings into residential development. And I just picked this as an example to kind of show you the dream big of what these types of code amendments are hoping to achieve. Um, this building to me kind of matched some of the pictures that I took in our own community and specifically the mixed-use zones. And you can kind of see, it's hard to tell on this, obviously it's not zoomed in, but how they're using that existing footprint, but just kind of converting it into a a more livable space for different types of housing, this one in specifically was looking for more family housing. Just kind of the dream big about what these code amendments are hoping to achieve.
Can I ask a quick something?
Yes, it was mentioned about um, the parking.
Yes.
Um, and how the city cannot require that additional parking get added, so hypothetically speaking, what does that look like for those second-story um, spots like downtown on Main Street, where now said maybe there's four, five, six units upstairs um, of people who didn't live downtown before? Um, so what does that, I mean, what does that look like? What would be the expectation for people to park? Yeah, that would definitely have an impact on the downtown, but unfortunately, that is one of the very specific state mandated parts of that House Bill ten forty-two that we cannot require any additional parking, and since the downtown doesn't require any commercial parking for new commercial anyways, parking could very well have a big impact, something was to take advantage of these permits in downtown. So.
One thing you did say was that the, if there's already parking, that you can't, they have to keep it.
Correct.
So like, I know at least two out of those three, like hypothetical buildings, um, the, there is parking that's related to, uh, yeah, so the bu- the building, all three of those buildings have parking, and then on the next one over, uh, the, let's see, I mean, that, the right, the bottom right, they pretty well have parking. The one who's got all the Jeep and those white things, the farther back building there, um, that works commercial on top, they have their own parking lot there too. So some of it, it wouldn't be like all, I can see where some of it would get absorbed a little bit, it would definitely have an impact, but it wouldn't be like quite as impactful as it might seem at first, very true, yes.
Yeah, I know, like in in the, one of the concerns in in downtown areas, like, and just to use this as an example, if you had residential in on the bottom right, there there's parking on both sides of that building, but on the street, and residential parking can take that up and then and then the businesses that are there, and I know that that's always a a real balance in in terms of having parking that's in close proximity to the businesses, so sometimes that could be, that could be a conflict.
I was gonna say, we write back to Carla's original question, what they use, and then it would probably wind up at city council, the conversation of do we set time limits? Uh, do we require residential parking on streets with certain hour or um, hourly restrictions and stuff like that, so.
I know there's some alleyways behind some of those buildings too that might be used for, you know, businesses that are there or were there, uh, put for, so.
There's a, there's anything like.
Um, Commissioner Dawkins.
Um, I should probably know this, but are any of those residential at all right now? It's all commercial?
I believe some of them are residential.
I think some of them in the, what is, what is that?
Yeah.
These are, these.
High on main one.
Here.
I think there's residential above the the building on the bottom right.
Yeah, the top one.
Um, no, these are businesses, yeah.
But even the ones that are residential could choose to redevelop at fifty percent greater density. So that is one way they can take advantage of this, even if they're already a residential use.
And I guess the only caveat is the same one with ADUs, you still have to comply with all of the building requirement, which is gonna be a challenge cuz it has the potential a fire sprinkler access, e- um, ingress egress.
Absolutely. So that's a great segue into my next next conversation here, so what is gonna be some of the biggest challenges of these texted conversions? Since we just saw our our dream big, right, on the last side, so let's break it back down a little bit. And just some of the biggest challenges is obviously gonna be the cost, um, while the House Bill ten forty-two um, requires that city wave energy code for requirements for any portions of the building that are not being converted, any portions that are being converted into residential would need to meet the energy code, and so I just briefly touched base with our building department and some of the major systems that could affect would be insulation for the whole building, um, updated windows, mechanical systems, water systems, sewer systems, um, and then possibly structural updates, um, specifically needing for seismic. So those would still all need to be met for any area that's being converted into residential. And it, and it.
Is that for the whole building or just for the new?
For energy code, it would just need to be the new portions, but the remainder of the building codes would need to be met for the entire building. So those could be the structural updates, if you know, mixed-use in particular, that can start triggering different types of sprinkler, fire sprinkler requirements. Chelsea?
Um, for the building codes, like if you're to do a residential above the bar, like of Papa's or any of those, are, do they require more insulation or more uh, soundproofing or anything like that? Um.
Not so much soundproofing, but it would be a fire separation likely because of the two different uses, so there's a certain rating on the wall, the materials, which would um, alter the construction of the probably floor-to-ceiling.
Is there any variance or exemption for like historic buildings or age of the building?
Um, I don't believe so that on the energy code, some things, there's an existing building code that would be a little different, that would be a good question for our building department, but the energy code, I do not believe would be.
I think that the bears thing though is the city of Monroe does not have a historic preservation program. If we did, there are some uh, variances through that, but the city does not have a program, we do not have a district, we don't have any uh, houses or buildings that are in that program, it's historic main and it would not be.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's no officially designated buildings in the city.
So um, the city of Seattle has already um, implemented um, a lot of these changes with that design competition, and they were expecting, just to kind of give you some rough numbers of what we could expect of any um, development here in Monroe to take advantage of this. So Seattle is expecting maybe twelve, twelve of these conversions in the next seven years. Um, and the city of Bellevue is expecting less than five in the next seven years. And the city of Bellevue did a lot of public outreach, um, I listened to some of their meetings and such, and um, the people that were most interested in the process were um, actually hotels, um, that may be converted into residential because they were far away there, I guess, for the building, um, but obviously were a lot smaller than both Seattle and Bellevue. Um, so it would be less likely that we have someone taking advantage of this, but still something mysterious asking them to do. Or asking as if not correcting the right, telling us, telling us. Uh, so in summary, um, the House Bill ten forty-two is a state-mandated update. Uh, the proposed code amendments are designed to help remove land use barriers with the conversion of existing commercial spaces into residential uses. Um, and we are proposing the baseline um, code amendments to meet this House Bill ten forty-two, we're not proposing anything above and beyond at this time, um, just based on the market in Monroe and the kind of structures that we have here, we're going for the baseline to meet this uh, saving date, and the post-code amendments need to be completed by June thirtieth this year. So I have requested action, if you don't have any questions, it would be to direct staff to prepare a formal packet for review and consideration as scheduled in public hearing. Um, an alternative motion would be to discuss at the next planning commission meeting, gonna go forward really quick, I'll come back to this slide though. Uh, here's the next steps, just you can kind of see where we're at. Um, after tonight's meeting, I'm gonna be taking this presentation to the um, Community Human Services Advisory Board and the Economic Development Advisory Board to give them just an introduction on these code amendments. And then um, the plan is to come back here to planning commission with you all um, in March for the public hearing, and then we'll move on to the city council for downtown, including that June deadline. Any questions?
I have a question, yeah, uh, so the part about us thinking that a lot of people might not um, take advantage of this, or uh, us just saying we're gonna just do the baseline that the state or was requiring, um, those two things, do they go together? Meaning like if we thought more people were gonna take advantage of this, would we be putting more like effort into maybe tailoring it to Monroe more, like how much work we'd put into like ADU stuff? My my only thought is, I I actually am, I'm hurt that I didn't actually already know that 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 was uh, coming on because if they'd already passed that House Bill, because I was, I've been watching this at other states and other places doing this, and even like how they're turning malls into housing, right? It's like the new thing is people are saying, oh, this is actually better suited for housing, and it seems like Monroe, that's an area that I think we could see a lot of people take advantage of, even some of the hotels or um, a lot of the areas that you even highlighted uh, are great examples, or even down here in this fire district building area, you know, it seems like there's room for housing mixed in. So um, I just wanna be sure we're not accidentally not emphasizing something that could be a big hit that we don't know.
Let's go back to the slide with the zones.
Absolutely.
I actually think meeting the baseline for Monroe based on where we have existing residential uses, those are the ones we really wanna go after, um, I know during the comp plan, one of the public meetings at my table, there was a lot of question about, well, all these vacant buildings in the industrial area. I would not, I would not encourage expanding to something like industrial because that is so hard to relocate, whereas residential uses, you can kind of go anywhere, to me, this is the sweet spot because you've already got that mixed use going on, and this is, in my opinion, um, where we have existing structures that you might actually see that happen. So I I actually think this would be, as written, good for the city. And Lance, any thoughts?
I I would agree, I mean, one of the 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 uh, things with industrial is that you only have, you're typically not designing more industrial land, it's, I mean, it's not a, it's not a finite resource, but typically you're not expanding and and we've had this question, where is the city looked at at designating additional industrial land? And it's a little bit difficult to do that, we still have some that's available. So i- if you convert that to residential, then you possibly lose industrial land and you lose land that you use in the job base and um, I think that that's one of the, that's one of the main concerns about about expanding it into industrial.
And I think if I may, maybe I did word it exactly correctly, um, the city of Bellevue, for example, was a really great example for me as I was working through our code amendments, um, because they went through a pretty extensive, from what I understand, public outreach, and they, their code amendments are more extensive, but they're also a little bit more restrictive, um, because they went to a little bit more detail on the design of these buildings themselves, um, that they went into maybe like different like trash enclosures, that they really kind of drilled down, so they actually have more code amendments proposed and I guess you could say restrictions, it's not exactly the great word, but they have more requirements of these buildings that are converting by sticking more towards the baseline, this bill, the way it's worded, is it's a lot of the city shall not do this. So when we shall not add extra parking, that that's great, cuz that's easier to convert, we're not requiring more parking. It's a lot of, you shall not do this, so by having less requirements, having less of those design elements, it is still leaving that door open, people that can take advantage of it here in town.
Well, that's, thank you, that answers our question perfectly.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
More discussion or move forward, I don't know. Are you worried for timeline if we discuss it more, that we're not gonna meet the timeline?
Um, I'm not, um, if you have any questions, I, we can talk about it now, we do, you have time for one more planning commission meeting technically, but if if we don't have any questions today, you know, if you don't anticipate, it would give us more time moving forward, there's some time built in, a little bit.
You could go to that, go to that slide and have a spin.
I would, I would see where you're.
I'm comfortable moving forward, but that's, that's.
And we'll still can discuss at the public hearing.
Because the public hearing does offer.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if we have questions between now and then, we can always email staff as well.
And I'll be going to two more boards and commissions um, as well, so if.
Will we get any feedback from them?
I can report back if there's any questions that come up, I wasn't anticipating, it's more of a um, kind of an introduction and saying that the state has made these mandates and this is how we're moving forward, um, there's not not a lot of input in terms of changing the code amendments that we were looking for in this process, it's more of a, um, this is what the state is having us do. This is what the state is having us do and this is how we're addressing now.
I mean, we would have, i- if there were any comments or suggestions for just have and E D A, those would occur. Given the schedule, those would occur before the planning commission hearing. The only, the only committee that it would go to um after the planning commission hearing would be P three. And like Lee Ann said, that's really more of an intro to the, to the, in the city council proceeding. So you would get um the, the two boards. Providing some input and, and I think, you know, one of them is housing related and one of them is economic development. I would imagine this discussion about uh industrial land would come up there as well. So I think you'd get a good mix of, of comments if, if, if they have any. About this and that we come back before the public hearing.
You've got comments.
Uh Commissioner Patrino?
I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to prepare a formal packet for review and consideration and schedule a public hearing.
Well, I was just gonna say, we, we have to do this and this is the minimum. Um and then, right? And so. And also we can't add things to it, right? Because we can't make it more. Um restrictive. Is that what I was hearing earlier?
The way that the House Bill ten forty-two is worded is a lot of this city shall not do this. So our proposals are saying, okay, the city shall not do this. Uh we're not adding anything extra at this time.
Okay. Then I second that motion.
All right, there's a motion of second. All in favor? All right, motion passes. See, yeah, concerns new business. So moving on to old business. Agenda item six point one is the final draft of the twenty twenty-five planning mission warrant program.
Yeah, thank you. So there's just um a few changes, but again, I just wanted to briefly run through what is on your busy schedule. Um there are quite a few things that we need to accomplish by June thirtieth. And there are a handful of items that we have to finish by the end of the year. And then there's the things that we want to do. So um as I mentioned, it's actually closer to eighty percent of the work that we have is being dictated to us. So it's stuff we need to get through. Um so I'm just gonna walk you through the projects. Um it's that table. It's the first attachment. It's the table that walks you through, kind of has identified a approximate number of months and the deadline of when, of when you will be finished. With the project. So the highlights again are the citywide rezone. You've already had the introduction. This is implementing the Monroe twenty forty-four comprehensive plan that was approved in December. Then we have House Bill fifty-two ninety, which you'll start hearing a lot about. And actually Amy touched on that changing permit type from two to one for accessory dwelling units. Again, this is the one, um when I started planning, it was called regulatory reform. The state said thou shall approve all permits within a hundred and twenty days. That got changed in twenty twenty-three. Depending on your permit type now, you have a sixty-five day clock, a hundred day clock and a hundred and seventy day clock. Depending on if it requires notice all the way up to public hearing. The next one, and you did have a brief introduction to that at your meeting in January. Um Amy gave you the introduction to House Bill thirteen thirty-seven accessory dwelling units. Leanne gave you the introduction to House Bill ten forty-two, the conversion of commercial for residential uses night. The next one, Anita will be the lead. Um it's unit lot subdivision and the best way to think of this is townhouses. Um instead, you can do it as condo. That's an option, but the unit lot subdivision is that horrible. Lot, it's an actual subdivision process for those smaller units. As long as the big piece is meeting the lot coverage setbacks. And so that's um that she was working on. That is also due by June thirtieth. The next one is the commuter reduction act. This is also Anita is the lead. This has been around since the nineteen nineties. It's in its second iteration. This is the third time it's been reviewed by the legislature. You might have seen some um surveying in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And this act again is if you have a hundred employees that arrive at work between six and nine A M. You are asked to reduce the vehicle miles traveled, which has reduction in air pollution, reduction in fossil fuels consumed. And it's encouraging people to carpool, to take the bus, uh walk to work if it's an option. And so our plan got up, updated last year. But that also means our municipal code, which regulates that, also needs to get updated. That's due by the end of July of this year. Uh the next one is the critical area regulation updates. That one is mine. I will be doing that. Um I'm hoping to start. May-ish. Um the city last updated this in twenty nineteen. Wait, I'm getting my dates wrong. The year after the city updated it last, there were some small revisions at the state level. One example is for critical areas used to have um very specific buffer requirements. Now um ecology is recommending that the buffer be based on the height of the tallest tree. So there's some different changes like that. Um the definitions for our code are not current, but our critical areas code is current. For classification of streams. So there's some cleanup work. So I'm, I'm hoping will be, um I'm hoping that will be rather expedient and we'll just do the fixes that we need to do. Uh middle housing. So this one has been warfing a little bit and you'll see that in the table I added changed or added work. Our original thinking is that this was gonna be a standalone chapter. After talking with um Alex Dukey, who was our uh consultant for the cop plan. They actually did an audit of our code and we're now thinking that a more appropriate way is changing the land use table for um. The R seven zone, which is the only one that's not conducive to middle housing right now. And then uh updating the infill standards as a standalone project. And updating uh the design standards that go allow along with residential development. So we actually think that will get streamlined. Um and that would be under the heading of implementing Monroe twenty forty-four and the housing action plan. Uh the airport compatibility, this is the first time you're seeing this. The P U D is still working on a development agreement with the city council. Um again, that is a contract, but it also has very specific land use actions. The P U D still has not purchased the airport, but it, our understanding is they're moving in that direction. If that is the case, it is their intent to decommission the airports. Once that happens, there are code changes that will occur. We have an airport overlay, which is required as long as we have a airport in our community. So uh if that changes, Lance will be taking the lead on uh that particular code amendment. Then phase two of the Monroe twenty forty-four, as I've explained at the, at the last meeting. Phase one is that very easy, quick and dry. We're making this change. Phase two is more of the, we're gonna have some policy conversations. That's again, how, how do we um make the appropriate changes to see what we want in downtown? But the conversation about protecting those really important buildings, but also getting the density occurring in the residential. So that's, um I hope to start that in also May, June, after I get through the regulatory requirements. And then phase two code cleanup, that um really will begin with. Our definitions for different uses are not the same as the actual uses in our land use tables. So it's really going back and doing that. Is this the right use for this zone? So my hope is that we begin that before the end of twenty twenty-five and it will really be a twenty twenty-six project. So um the other items I gave you. Just for your reference, or your reference is the next sheet and it gives you the approximate timeline and also the project lead. And then the final one is the six-year, excuse me, yes, six, six-year strategic plan. Uh that the city council just adopted. And you can see throughout, there's um items that either directly relate to this work or also have to do with the planning department. So with that, I am hoping you will accept this and word it to the city council. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to accept the final draft of the twenty twenty-five planning to mission. And forward to Monroe City Council for final approval.
Yes, I can.
I submit. Right, all in favor? Right, moving on to discussion by commissioners and staff. You can go ahead and start online, Kelsey.
Hi, good to see you all. Um. I don't have much. I do have, actually I have a question from the last meeting. Sorry that I wasn't there, but I watched it. Um, the map, was that, um, did we say yes to that map and, and it's going forward? Um I don't have a lot more information than that. Uh I was just had a concern on if we have enough parks, park space. Uh for our zoning. Um. But I don't, I wasn't there, so I don't, I don't, not sure if we like voted on the map that we were talking about.
Sure. So, so the citywide rezone is only changing those areas that we changed in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, if you wanted more park space, it really needs to begin with a park board process. But then it would be incorporated into the comprehensive plan and then it would be part of what we started last, at your last meeting. And that's the citywide rezone to ensure that your zoning is actually implementing your future land use map.
Okay, got it. Um and then other than that, uh just good to see you guys. That's all.
Great meeting. It's gonna get cold over the next couple of days. Keep your water dripping so your pipes don't freeze. Thanks, everybody.
Um I have a question. Um in December, we uh in the public wanted to get a copy of the comp plan. Now I was wondering, do I need to know if we were giving it how it is or we wanted to, we're waiting to for the amendments, so about that.
The, the comp plan is adopted. Thank you for that reminder.
I wasn't sure if that.
Yep, no, it's, it's adopted, adopted.
Okay.
So um we're gonna do that. Did we already do that for council? I forgot.
Who all would like a physical copy of the comp plan? One, two, three, four. All right. I will have them for you.
Okay, thanks. I, I wasn't sure. I wanted to clarify.
Um and a question for you. The council only wanted the actual twelve, or excuse me, eleven chapters. They did not want the appendices. Do you want the entire thing or do you want most of the appendices but not the utilities plan? Do you want to take a look and, and get back to us?
I, I want everything. I want everything.
You want everything.
Because if you don't have something, that's what you're gonna, I'm, I'm used to that, yeah.
Yeah, right, in two binders.
I'm fine with what the, what you gave the council.
Okay.
Uh one of it, whatever's easiest. Because there is, there is like the.
It's online.
Is online.
Yeah, yeah. Just was assured, the transportation plan.
Good question.
Different document and the trails master plan is a different document and those are in the appendices, so.
That, I, I amend my request. Give me just what the council that. I, I don't want staff, I don't want staff making voodoo dolls of me, so. Go ahead.
Whatever I got when I joined up, I'm here with the last one. It was in a binder and I think that it was nice.
Just one binder, that's fine.
And also, um I know we're changing our zoning map. And so when, once that's changed, can we also get a copy? Is that possible too? That would be great.
Who all would like a physical copy of the updated map? One, two, three, four.
Okay, I know there's time, I'm trying to go back and find out where this map is and where that map is and that would be great.
I know I've made a couple of copies of our previous zoning map for you guys.
Yeah, you gave me one.
Yeah, the big ones.
A big one is awesome. All right, I'll make you guys big ones.
I have a big one, yeah. And um yeah, I agree. Um I thought it was a good meeting, a lot of information and a lot of certifications and I think that was really good and good discussion. Thank you. Thank you for bringing forth that you have staff.
By sheer brandy. Thank you. Uh I am excited. This work plan that you have for us is fun. I mean, it is. There's a lot of things we've been talking about for years on the comp plan. We were just like getting all, and now it's like, okay. Let's start getting some of the actual changes made from the conceptual stuff we just talked about. So this is exciting. And um I think that we should have Leanne and Amy at every meeting. Um another exciting thing, this is gonna be great to get two, two new voices in here, two new advocates for, you know, their areas and where their. Wherever their um backgrounds and stuff are from. So this is all new year, exciting stuff. So, thank you.
It's just good to say, it's, I mean, this year, you're gonna get all five planners before you, because there's so much work that we need to accomplish that. Lance has got a couple, Anita's got a couple. Leanne has one right now. I might add another one to her place. He's got at least one, so.
I just share on the sentiments. Um obviously, Lan and Amy are not here anymore, but thank you to both of them for, um obvious, uh. As always, offering us a plethora of information and um I learned something. I learn some things new every single meeting about the city, which is a big, big reason why I signed up to do this um in the first place. And so um thanks to my fellow commissioners, because it's the pleasure to serve alongside you and I'm excited for a couple new faces as well. Um, yeah, stay warm. Um Commissioner Duncan, that's for him.
I'm so sorry. I do have something to add. I have a house in Bellingham and I got this, oh. Oh, I don't know. It's a three free tree giveaway for um to like grow the canopy up in Bellingham. And I know we don't have mandates, but I guess the park is gonna be doing that, but I thought that was a really cool thing that the city is. Um having people sign up for certain areas to grow the canopy up in Bellingham. And they're giving trees away to do that. Um and also providing like um insight on where to put them. And what would be the best places. It's not, not everybody that signs up for it is gonna get it. It's um like a raffle kind of thing. But um I thought that was kind of cool thing that their city was doing. Um so I hope that we can. Like, do something about that in our city, because that will help with the climate.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. We do not take offense to that. Um just a couple of things. It, it, it's one comment about, about the trees is. I, I, and this is more editorial thing. I, I know, I mean, I live in the Frylands and I live in an area that's got a lot of trees. And I, and I like it. And I like, I, one of the reasons that I like living there. And when you go up into the new suburbs, it's not, there's not a lot of trees. There's not a lot of mature trees. And I wonder at what point it becomes more of an emphasis up in that area. People that are living there are gonna wanna get more trees. So if, I wonder if you could, if you've got a, a link for that and if you could send that on. I'd be curious to see that. Um just, I kind of a, a window, people may have noticed. Work going on in downtown, uh just if you're curious at what, at what that is, the, the building where. Uh Papa's and uh Tijuana Restaurant is located, and I don't know the name of that building. Although I'm learning, it's got, it's got, it's got some interesting history. I was gonna, you know, try to get maybe the historic society to put some stuff together. But uh things, businesses that have been, or those are meat market at one point. It was a, it's been a lot of different things. Um but, so they had a facade piece that was literally separating off of the building. And the fire department initially noticed it, notified the city that there was an issue. Um it's a public work. Um, and so public works was involved with closing down the, the sidewalk, cause it was in, it was in danger of, of something coming off of there. So it was, it, and the property owner's been, has been very responsive and they've had, uh, some contractors out there. They've taken it off. If you haven't been over there, and I could send people pictures, I went over there today. It's interesting, if you're into old buildings, that. A, a lot of people probably wouldn't realize, there's just some, you know, it's nice brick. It's not in great condition, but. A lot of those buildings down there, if you look, they, they have these brick walls. That were original part of the building and they've had a lot of awnings and. Facades and all this stuff put on there. So they haven't decided what they're gonna do. I don't believe that they're gonna put the big. The big facade piece that was up there before. And hopefully they're gonna be able to leave some of that exposed brick and maybe put like a more of a flat kind of awning on there. So it leaves that open. And they're, they've been doing some evaluation on it, so they might make a decision on that tomorrow. So just to let folks know, I mean, the business. Uh, Papa's is actually moving out of that building into another location, but Tijuana has been able to stay open. Granted, with access through, through the rear of the building, so obviously that's not optimal for them, but. Um, it was, it was one of these situations that came up and probably has turned, at least at this point, has turned out as, as well as, as possible. Everything is, is moving forward. So. It gives people a wondering and you see that work down there. The sidewalk is closed. It's like, what's going on? And thank you for your comments today. And thanks for the, thank you for the public comment as well about, about the revenues. We always appreciate that. And it is some fun stuff. It's daunting. I don't like looking at this, at this list and I, and I. I dare ever bring it up to Kay, because it's like, yeah, the comp plan, uh, you don't get a breath. It's just like, no. Run for, run harder. But there is a lot of stuff on here that has been in the comp plan and policies. And it's, it's funded and forward. I wish it was a little less. State, state directed, maybe, I don't, you know, it's just, but that's, that's the way, that's where we are. And the legislature is in session right now and we're gonna see more changes. So, um, we're trying to keep up. It's tough. But thank you for your, um, your, your efforts.
Okay, so I'm just gonna reiterate, um, just to make sure everybody heard, um, the mayor has interviewed three individuals for the two spots. Um, he, he has a small concern because the three applicants are all south of US two. And west of hundred and seventy-nine. We have, um. Uh, we have Carla and Bob up in the hill, so we have that geography covered. We have downtown historic Monroe area. Really well covered, but west Monroe, the Frylands up to the foothills is not. And so. Think the mayor is a little bit hopeful that maybe somebody from that area would apply. So, um. If you got any friends in that neighborhood, put the word out. We're really hopeful to have that nice geographical spread for the city. Um, if not. You're in the Fryland?
Yeah.
Oh, how did I not realize? Oh, well, I will let the mayor know, cause that might have. Okay. Thank you for reminding me. I will pass that along, cause that was a concern of his, um, that might change his, um. He might expedite the decision. He was talking three weeks. So that might help us out. Um, there's that. Um, I did, again, this is another reminder, our parks director is soon to retire. I wanted to let you know they're already interviewing. Um, last week, so hopefully there'll be a nice transition. When, when is Mike's last day?
It's the end of this month.
Okay, so the end of February.
So, soon.
He's retiring. I still remember the day he was sworn in as the parks director.
That Mike Farrell.
Yeah.
Yes.
He's not old enough to retire.
He's retiring.
Wow.
They're moving to another state.
Moving to Idaho.
Yeah. And then just, um, two personal notes. One about the tree thing. Um, I got a living Christmas tree this year that I'm donating to the Parks Department. So I'm hoping with the canopy feels good. And then, um, talking about the cold, I get no breaks. I am headed to Virginia for my dad's service finally. Uh, it's supposed to be thirty-two degrees that day and the next day my brother-in-law just told me it's supposed to snow four to six inches. So. I might have trouble getting home. That's it. It's gonna be a great year. A lot of work.
Yeah. Uh, I don't have anything. Okay, we are shy in the night o'clock. That's, that's good. Back to me. Yes, I make the motion that we. Yay, everyone, all in favor? Alright, thank you.